Good evening. I'd like to reconvene from our executive session from previous 6:00. And call this meeting to order for the Tuesday, January 17 special meeting. I am the Chair, Ben Filbrick. And we will be rotating some seats in and out, but presently, we have Ryan Deasy, Chuck Sheehan, myself, Ben Filbrick, Fred Deitman, Lynn Conway, Andy Meek, Gary Belkey, and Marge Salinger as alternates, the last three.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I move we come out of executive session. Seconded.
Yes, any seconded. Granted. Yes.
I vote we come out of executive session.
We have a second from Ryan. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Chuck.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to have the committee approve the settlement agreement for pending litigation in Rufus Allen et al. versus Town and Stoney Planning and Zoning Commission.
Seconded.
Thank you, Chuck, for the second. Thank you, Ryan. Before we go any further for this vote, I will have to recuse Fred Deitman and put in Gary Belkey for the vote, since you weren't around. We have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I believe this motion allows both sides to, both the town and the appellant, to avoid further legal costs, which is a benefit to both. And I think it gives the applicant a fair opportunity to correct the application and bring it back to the commission.
For further study.
Correct.
New application. Any other discussion?
I agree with you, Chuck.
I do as well.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Oh, and the attorney did want me to express to the public that if they have interest in following this court proceeding, to please get in touch with either Keith Brynes or the town attorney, Landergin, for any dates of the court proceeding, or if you have any interest in following it. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for December 20th as written and submitted.
Thank you, Ryan. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Chuck. Any discussion?
Yeah, I think that there's a correction on page two, the last sentence, where it says, "Miss Conway is concerned that this is a major change to the Riverbank view, with stone being very consistent among the existing properties, and that this appears to be a late change, not affected by cost." I believe my comment was that it was a late change, and any decision should not be based on cost. So they shouldn't bring a change forward due to the fact that there was an increase in the cost.
Is this December 20th?
Yes.
I think it is. I think it is, Keith. This 1713 meeting.
1713 is actually what's on the agenda.
Ron, 1713 December 20.
Oh, I'm sorry. This is the 1712 that I have in my folder.
Okay, yeah, that was approved last time.
That's the one that's in my folder, Keith.
So that needs your signature for the last minutes. That's what those are. If you don't want us, we could...
Yeah.
We've voted on them previously.
I don't know how you handle that. That's not, that wasn't correct. I missed it.
Do we...
Well, for the purposes, we have the motion. Do we want to approve the minutes for 1713 for December 20th?
Right. There is, thank you, Ryan, for bringing me back around. And for this vote, we can bring Fred back in for the minutes, correct?
Yeah, yeah. I'm good.
For the regular members, regular commission. So, any further discussion on numbers 1713 of December 20th minutes?
I don't have the minutes.
They were given to you online or from the package?
No. What I have is right here.
Well, that's for your signature tonight.
But I'm just saying I don't have a hard copy of the minutes in my folder.
Oh. So you'd rather not vote on them?
No, I'm not going to vote, no.
Okay, so you're abstaining. Okay, so, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Two, three, four, and I guess one abstention from Lynn. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd also like to make a motion to approve the minutes for the December 27th meeting, which is meeting number 1714, as seconded and submitted.
Thank you, Ryan. Thank you, Chuck. And those are for the rewrites. That was our online meeting, correct? Yep.
Yeah.
And so...
I'm making a motion, but I didn't read those, so I'll abstain from that.
You have to abstain because you weren't there. All those in favor will be aye.
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 I abstain because I was not there.
Oh, abstain, okay. So carried. Two abstentions. Thank you. Any correspondence, Keith?
No, no.
So now to your reports.
Yeah, item A1, Discussion of Land Use Training Guidelines for Planning and Zoning Commission Members. Just bringing this to our attention here, that Public Act 2129, which was an act concerning the zoning-enabling act, accessory apartments, training for certain land use officials, municipal affordable housing plans, and a commission on Connecticut's development and future, was approved by the General Assembly in 2021. That act amended different things related to land use in the state statutes, and one of the things it did is to have a new requirement for, a minimum training requirements for planning and zoning commissions and zoning board of appeals members. So, starting this year, each member of the Planning and Zoning Commission and/or ZBA has to complete at least four hours of training by January 1st of next year. One of the four hours has to be related to the topic of affordable and fair housing. There's not a formal state certification program, so it's not like there's one class that you must attend and graduate from that. The guidelines are developed to be flexible. One of the things that's helpful that came out after I sent you this memo was, the memo was recently sent out by UConn's Center for Land Use Education and Research, known as CLEAR, and they've set up a statewide land use commissioner training calendar, which is sort of a central repository for training events. I forwarded this, their email on Friday, last Friday, the 13th, if you dig that up.
And do we need to tell, give you a check? I mean, how do you check that we've done our homework?
You know, it's, because there's not like one certain training facility you go to, basically, this commission has to report to the Board of Selectmen by March of next year, just assuring them that we've all done this, so...
So if I cut a check for the $45 and go to you for reimbursement, that's proof that, I guess, that is...
Yeah, yeah. I don't, I don't know how much these organizations that put on these things really keep track of who goes there and whether they stayed for the whole thing and all that.
Why don't know the town wanted verification that we've actually done this?
Yeah, yeah.
So, so as we, as we attend some sort of training session, we just tell you about it? And if there's a cost involved, ask you for reimbursement?
Right, right.
Seems simple.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I guess that's the verification process.
Yeah, and, you know, luckily, it's not the most burdensome thing. It's, you know, four hours in total, and a lot of these training sessions are virtual. And your packets are pamphlet, pamphlets for one coming up by the Connecticut Bar Association.
I did that one last year. It's very good. It's very comprehensive.
Yeah.
It's amazing.
Yeah.
They move it right along. It's very worthwhile.
Yeah, and the CLEAR ones are very good, too, because they're very geared towards municipal commission members. So those are helpful, too. And yeah, that's, that's it for that.
Okay.
Which brings us to old business, PZ 2229 SPA and GPP, Ameru's LLC, Site Plan and Groundwater Protection Permit Applications for a construction of 4,500 square foot retail convenience store with a drive-through window, 5,625 square foot retail building with associated parking and site improvements, property located at 376, 380, and 384 Liberty Street, Pawtucket, Assessors Map 18, Block 5, Lots 4-1, Zone CS5. This application for tonight's meeting is intended more of an introduction to get input from you for the applicants. This has to go back to the Architectural Design Review Board on February 13th, so it'll be back before you, February 21st, at which case a decision would have to be made. So rather than having the whole discussion be at one night, I figure it would be better to introduce it to you here. And I think they have a presentation on the screen for you.
Good evening. I'm Susan Marquardt, professional engineer with Larrero Engineering. I'm here tonight to represent the owner and applicant for this application. So the applicant, to give you a little history on the project, it's located at 376, 380, 384, and then there's also an additional lot that's zero Liberty Street. So it's four lots together that will be the site. I'll show you the existing conditions plan in just a moment. There was a special permit and site plan application that was granted for this project in 2006. The site plan approval expired. So we're before you tonight for a site plan application and a groundwater protection permit. So this is the existing condition plan that shows the entire site is made up of an existing convenience store, two residential houses, and an existing foundation. The, the property, it slowly drains all to Liberty Street or Route 2. At the back of the property, to the west, it's, as you can see from the shaded, it's steep slopes, and it's woods in that area. All right, and this is the site layout plan. So this shows what we are proposing, a new 4,500 square foot convenience store with a drive-through, and a new retail building. And those are what was permitted previously. The changes from what was previously permitted to the plans you see before you today include the number of stacking lanes. Previously, seven was what the regulations require. As you can see on the plan, now it is 10. The other changes to the plan from before is we have to meet current zoning regulation requirements, we have to meet current stormwater requirements. That's the biggest change, is stormwater, and because, and to meet MS4 requirements. We're in the groundwater protection district, so we cannot infiltrate all impervious surface. So we are infiltrating the roof drainage, and the other impervious surfaces are collected, and we have detention systems. The parking in front of the new retail building has been revised, and that was after we met with the fire chief. He had mentioned that, you know, he was, he reviewed these plans years before, but today's fire equipment are very different than what he had at the time. So we have revised the parking in front of the retail store, the access drive around the retail building, so fire trucks can enter the site, go around both buildings, and exit the site. These revised plans have been submitted to him, but I haven't got any comments back at this moment. But those are the major changes since the previous approved application.
Excuse me, do you have any handouts of the revised plan, or just what's up on the wall?
These were provided to Keith, I don't know, a week or so ago. I don't know how they're distributed to the commission, so...
Yeah, it might be that we didn't put them in your packets here.
Okay.
So we, we'll be sure and get those to you, whether you want full size or...
We have another month, too, yeah.
11 by 17, or, yeah. We'll make sure those get to you.
And you, did you address the retaining, and the old plans, is there, there wasn't a height for the retaining wall in back? Has that been delineated?
Yes, so, there are two retaining walls. There's one behind the retail building, there's one behind the convenience store building.
Oh.
The one behind the retail building was permitted previously.
Oh.
The one behind the convenience store is new, but at the highest point, it's two and a half feet tall. So, but yes, the current regulations, right, anything over, I believe, five feet cannot be in the setback, yes. As far as signage for the site, we do show calculations for the signs and a potential sign out by the street, but we don't know, you know, what tenants or have any leases for who will go into the building. So any signage would come under a, an application at a later date in time. This is the grading and drainage plan, just to show you the extents of the two detention systems that are in front of the stores, and the infiltration system, which is behind the new convenience store. And all of these together, we'd be piped out and connected to the existing catch basin that is on-site, which then is piped under Route 2 across the street. We have a drainage report that has been provided with the application that shows a no-net increase, except we do have one small area that is like .01 increase for the two-year storm and .2 for the, for the 10-year storm, but overall, net decrease for the entire site. This is the erosion and sedimentation control plan. We pretty much have all your, all your standard. You have your construction entrance, silt fence along the roadway, we have a stockpile area behind the convenience store. All the new and existing catch basins will have silt sacks during construction. This is the landscaping plan. This was reviewed at the Architectural Review Board last week, and they did ask for some minor modifications to this plan, as well as, we got additional comments from the town engineer today that asked for a couple minor changes, too. So we'll make sure that is in the revised packet and gets back to you.
And you're, you can meet all the requirements from the town engineer, his comments?
Yes, I believe it was make sure that the tree out at the right turn only is not in the sight line, or any of the landscaping is in the sight line. So we'll make sure that that is revised, and I believe it was one of the types of vegetation changed out to something else, but yes.
Any other questions from Chuck?
I, just a comment, really. This is a vast improvement over the one-way circulation and the 45-degree angular parking, which covered almost 100% of the site, and that I don't think worked for the emergency vehicle turning radii. One thing that does concern me is, is I'm assuming, based on the date that the town engineer quotes for the plans, it's later than, than the date of the plans that we have. I would have liked to have had a copy of this, so I could have looked at it in advance of the meeting, but he still has a comment that he's looking for some illustration of horizontal geometry that, I guess substantiates that the fire vehicle has a proper turning radius. So do you know that, whether or not he's received that?
We just got those comments this afternoon, the revised comments from the town engineer.
But this was an original comment. This was, the comments are dramatically reduced from the previous list of comments, which covered two pages. It's now down to just five comments, which I compliment you on, but this was a comment on the original list, and he still has the comment after he looked at this plan. That's a serious comment.
We, when we redesigned the parking and the access around the retail building, we actually did the turning template that shows the, the fire truck turning in that meets what the fire chief said he had for equipment. So I just must, must have forgot to include that in the package. But we have the whole turning movement throughout the site for the fire truck that we can provide.
Were you using the vehicle, design vehicle that he had asked you to use?
Yes.
And what vehicle was that?
I believe he said he had a 40-foot turning radius was the guideline that we were given for the fire truck.
Okay. If you could superimpose that on the plan when you come back, so that we can see it as well?
Sure.
That's usually in, in any CAD package, and you can superimpose it right on the drawing.
We laid it out in CAD. That's what we have it in, right, in the drawing. So, yes.
Thank you. Because the comment survives, I'd like to see it, you know, actually laid out on the plan. Thank you.
You're welcome.
No further comments.
I had one more comment, question, and the first set of plans it mentions using chain-link fence, is that still in the new site plan, the new drawing, revised drawings?
A chain-link fence, in what location?
Well, I don't remember where I saw it, but I have a little note saying chain-link fence is...
Was it on the retaining walls, maybe?
Probably.
Perhaps. I just wonder if there could be, use an alternative to chain-link. I have to go through all my... I did this a while ago.
I believe for the retaining wall, we do still show, I think, a chain-link fence, but we can take a look at that.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions from the commission?
I don't have any.
Okay, so I guess we'll see you in next month.
Okay.
Right? Make your new plans.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item 9B, PZ 2233 CAM, Martirelli LLC Group, that's the coastal area management for retaining walls and kayak launch at 33 DuBois Drive. Recommend tabling that until the next meeting, just waiting for comments from DEP.
Do you need a motion, Keith?
No, no, we can just kick it off. And that brings us to the public hearing, so I've got to take a minute to call the applicant here.
Yes.
Who'll just join us on the phone, and hopefully, we can all hear each other. You're at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting here.
Okay.
So I don't know if we'll all be able to hear each other.
Okay.
Just sticking you up to a microphone here.
Am I on speaker?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Yep, so we'll have to, the secretary of the commission will have to read the call and officially open the hearing.
All right.
Keith, I, I don't have the...
No. And actually, we opened it, officially opened it last time, too, so...
I think we did. We can just reopen the public hearing?
Yeah.
Continuation of the...
Make a motion to reopen the public hearing for this application, 2230 R.A.
Thank you, Ryan.
Seconded.
Thank you, Chuck. So, think...
Approve the vote? Are we making a vote? Did everybody vote to reopen? Reopen? Do we need everybody to vote to reopen?
Ah, okay.
I don't know.
I don't think we need to vote on the reopening.
Okay.
But I'm just trying to remember seating. I think it's going to be Ryan, Chuck, myself, Fred, were you here for the initial one? And Lynn?
Yeah, and there was really no discussion, so it's just whoever's seated now can be seated.
Okay, you're right. So Lynn will be the regular five members. Okay, thank you. Are there any questions concerning this revision?
I have some questions.
Go ahead, Andy.
So, we've got this revision that will allow for the keeping, raising, and breeding of rabbits, and the proposed text is explicit about, you know, it's kind of a double negative in saying that a prohibited use of the town is keeping, breeding, and raising of foxes, minks, pigs, rodents, and other fur-bearing animals, with the exception of rabbits. And then we've got the alternative suggestion from the ZEO, which is the same, except it adds, if located on a lot of five acres or more. And I think that this is a doorway into a larger issue that I'm hoping we can look deeper at during the zoning rewrite process, once we get to the second phase where we're actually considering the content of the regulations rather than just the formatting of them. But it seems to me that now is not the time to start specifying lot sizes for the keeping and breeding of animals.
Back to that, yeah.
That suggestion was made because that is the size that is currently defined as the minimum size for a farm in town. That said, though, five acres seems like a lot of land for rabbits. So I would say that, that, that alternative, I understand the intent, but I think that this sort of getting into how much acreage is needed for different types of livestock is a much larger issue, and I think we'd be better off for the moment just letting, letting that be omitted if it were to be passed.
The size.
The size, yes. And I don't know, this has nothing to do with the, the proposed changes, but it seems very odd that we have a prohibition on raising... odd that we have a prohibition on raising pigs in town, which is something I noticed in reading that. So that, that's a whole nother thing.
Nobody has asked that question. I kind of agree with Andy. This is a very inelegant way of writing it, but since we're going to rewrite the regulations, maybe we could do it, we could let it, let it go for the moment. Do we specify on a farm what sort of livestock are allowed? Or, I don't recall that we do.
No, with the exception of these prohibitions on certain things.
Okay.
We don't get into the gory details. Some towns really regulate how many animals of different types you have based upon the size of a farm, and our regulations really don't go there. You know, some regulations use terms like animal units, and if you have this size lot, you can have this many animal units, which translates into this type of animal of different size, and they can get very complicated.
Okay.
So I guess to step back, if anyone's here for this wondering what it is, this is a zoning regulation amendment applied for by Mystic River Farm LLC. They're looking to raise rabbits on a farm, so they're looking to change the zoning regulations to get rid of the prohibition on raising rabbits for agricultural use. Since 1963, our regulations have had this prohibition on keeping, breeding, and raising of rabbits. Since zoning was established in 1961, there's been language prohibiting raising of foxes, minks, pigs, and rodents. And two years after that, in 1963, rabbits and other fur-bearing animals were added. There's really no record as to why. When you look at the minutes and everything like that from back then, there's no real explanation as to why. As part of what he did for the application, the applicant reached out to the planning departments in some of the different towns around here that do allow it to see if they had any complaints. So we had, he got responses from North Stonington, Groton, and Leadyard, who responded that they allow agricultural uses involving rabbits and haven't had any issues. We got comments from different responders who really didn't come up with any issues or negative impacts, like the Conservation Commission, Ledge Light Health District, Council of Governments, and DEP. As Andy mentioned, the zoning official recommended having a minimum lot size of five acres. If we change this... And that's about it, really. You know, because there's not much to really go on as to why the town didn't allow it to begin with.
So what we're discussing here is still allowing everything else to be prohibited.
The fox and the mink.
Right.
Yeah.
But we don't, it doesn't indicate that there be a limitation on the number of rabbits kept. So you can keep a lot of rabbits. I mean, you know, if you were going to use the rabbits for fur or for meat, you can keep a lot of rabbits, and you're going to need a structure, et cetera, et cetera. So I just wonder if you're, if we're not going to have any kind of zone where it's acceptable or a lot size that it's acceptable, you've got to think about it. It could be anywhere, any residential neighborhood that have a hundred rabbits in your yard.
Good point.
And I'm just not sure that's reasonable. So sometimes you have to look at the extremes when you rewrite these to make sure that you're not opening it up.
Yeah.
You know, I think if you think about two, three rabbits, that's very different. But a rabbit colony is a lot of rabbits.
So you would keep the restriction to a farm, minimum acreage?
I personally would keep it to a farm or put a limit to the number unless on a farm, something like that. So if somebody wanted to have four rabbits or something, that's very different than...
Four hundred.
Exactly, exactly. I think you've got to kind of balance that out. And I don't know what the suggested number or land usage, I mean, say, a farm. I think that, that makes sense, but do you say...
The drawback I see to that is that the article of the regulations that's being amended would be an extremely awkward place to try and put these good ideas, right? I would suggest, I would be in favor of passing this, allowing the amendment, and then making a point during the rewrite process of thinking about whether we want any sort of raising, breeding, that sort of thing happening in some of our tighter residential zones. It may be that it's just not appropriate, and there's a very low, you know, domestic animal kind of limit to certain zones in town, but I really shy away from the lot size. I feel when you're in a zone that has, you know, like the R-30 or something, where the lots are generally bigger, it would be, it would feel right to see something like this happening, even if the property was only two acres, say. If it's in that zone, even though it's a smaller property. So I guess what I'm trying to say is I feel like using our different zones to specify maximum animal capacities would be a better way to go about it than the lot size, because that prevents it from becoming a neighborhood nuisance kind of thing.
Yeah, I can understand where you're going from.
That makes sense.
You know, you stack rabbit cages. If somebody used to work in a rabbit colony during college, I know this. So, you know, again, I think looking at it from a rewrite perspective and not passing this now and really looking at it, because then what happens? Like the rewrite is, you know, a year and a half process by the time we get through everything. You've got somebody who's invested commercial, you know, perhaps, right, a commercial investment, and now we're stuck. So I just don't think that we have the information, and I don't think we have what we need to make a decision that later on we might not regret. I agree with your approach wholeheartedly. I just think we need to put it on the agenda for the rewrite and not, and not get into a situation that somebody's taken action, invested their money, you know, maybe their livelihood, and then we come back and say it's no longer acceptable.
Well, then it would be a pre-existing...
And do we want that? Do we want to open up for something that we know we're going to rewrite, a pre-existing use? I mean, to me, that doesn't make a lot of sense.
I agree. I think that's a much better place to handle it. And then you get a chance on a comprehensive way to consider what you've said as to how does this apply in each zone as opposed to limiting it to one zone where you have five acres, which may not be necessary. I sat on another commission which grappled with this very same question, and that's the way it ultimately was handled.
Okay.
Yeah.
It was the way, so, and that's not what's requested. But I do think, you know, that I agree with what Lynn is saying, and that a better way to handle this would be in the rewrite, and if there may be other species of animals that we've overlooked.
Mm-hmm.
You know, that we shouldn't make the same mistake that we made, if indeed we made a mistake, when we didn't put rabbits in the regulation.
Right.
So would you suggest denying this at this point and asking the applicant to come back in 15 months from now? You know, we've got somebody here who's ready to go.
Right.
Wants to go, and...
Well, if the regulations create a permitted use for him, he really may just be able to do it.
But no, no. My point is that he's asking for an amendment now.
Right.
So that he can...
Proceed.
Get started. And I think, well, I guess I think we could do that if we, if we, if we limit the...
I understand what you're saying, Fred. I think you raise a good point. It's likely that what he's requesting would be a part of the larger regulation that would be the rewrite. So is there any harm in approving this? Probably not, but...
But we don't really know that.
No, we don't.
You're right. It could go the other way, where we write something that creates that now as a non-conformity.
And remember, you don't change regulation for one instance.
One species.
So this person might say, yeah, I just want to have three rabbits, thank you very much. But in 18 months, somebody else wants something else. So you've got to be very, I think, aware that we're not changing a regulation, it's like spot regulating, except it's just one person at this point.
If I could suggest, and I don't know if the petitioner has any comments or input, he'd like to maybe give us a little more insight to Fred's point, like what he is specifically looking for, for something that we might be able to accommodate or not.
We need to hear back, yeah, okay.
Yeah, I think it might, this probably has been hard for him to hear this, but I guess the specific question is what scale is he looking to do? And, Mark, I don't know how much you can hear any of this here, but...
Yeah, thanks for the consideration. The thought here is that not so much to specify the quantity of rabbits or any other livestock for that matter. It seems like the zoning regulations cover that in other sections where they restrict lot sizes and the amount of livestock or animals that could be on those lot sizes. This is really a text amendment change to eliminate an animal that was prohibited in 1963 without any explanation for any farmer and quite frankly, a residence, as a domestic animal wants to keep it, they may have the right, just as they might have a right to have hens or other animals. But that in, you know, for the purpose of agriculture, that this animal not be banned, there's no real explanation on why it's banned, and that the limitations based on lot size, et cetera, parcel, would be addressed wherever all of the other limitations are on livestock elsewhere in the regulations.
Yeah, and our regulations in most of the zones where agriculture is allowed does limit keeping and breeding of livestock and including commercial stables on 240,000 square feet or more, with a 200-foot setback for stables and manure storage. So, you know, assuming we, assume rabbits are livestock.
Right.
Looks like you'd need to meet that.
Right, and so that's a definition that's probably going to need to be amended in the zoning rewrite.
I can't quite hear you, Lynn. Can you use somebody else?
I'm sorry.
Well, yeah, it looks like rabbits would be covered under livestock. There is a definition, which is just farm animals kept for use and/or profit, except those listed under prohibited uses. So it's not only the big animals.
So if we allow this exception for rabbits, then that livestock limitation on 240,000 square feet would pertain to them, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
So...
Yep, so...
Somebody couldn't have a rabbit as a pet?
Well, as a pet, as a pet, I think is a different story, because people typically do have rabbits as pets.
Now, this is a commercial...
Yeah, this is a more commercial operation.
I would also put forward something, you know, reading through more about the market for rabbits. I don't think it's something we're going to see everybody jump on all at once just because it's legal, because they are rather hard to move still.
Move?
You can't sell rabbit meat directly.
What, it has to go through a licensed butcher like Rhode Island type of thing?
I, there's, I was reading through the report here, there are some state, state regulations. Let's see if I can find the bit that was...
I would assume you'd have...
I can't quite find the part I was reading about earlier, but essentially, currently, you can't go and buy rabbit meat from a farm. You can go and buy a live rabbit, and then you can...
Dress it yourself.
Pay for somebody else to turn that into food, but you can't go that direct route. So I'm just saying, it's not a business market that is rife for expansion at the moment.
Why don't we hold that thought and ask, are there any comments from the public that would like to participate in this discussion? In favor? General comments? All quiet on the rabbit front.
Joe, do you want to start with a motion?
Sure.
Okay.
All right, well, you know, I just before the applicant sort of shut out of the discussion, if we close the hearing, you know, if he had any last thoughts here or if there were any other questions for him?
They have a last bit, they're keen.
Oh, there were no comments from the public, so I was just asking the commission if they had any last questions for you before they possibly close the hearing.
Or does he have a last statement?
I do.
Or, okay.
So just based on your comments, it sounds as if you, you have no immediate need to have this regulation changed, that it's more of an academic argument. You didn't indicate that you had a personal interest or an immediate reason for asking for this change. Is that correct?
There may be a commercial activity in the future, but none of that can really happen or even be contemplated if it's not legal.
Okay.
The only, yeah, the only option would be to go to another town.
Okay.
Which would be unfortunate, but that's, you know, that's the other alternative.
Okay, so again, just, just so that I'm very clear, the reason you're asking for this is because you, you want to commercially raise rabbits on a piece of property?
I don't have an answer to that yet. What we are seeking is the option to do so.
Okay, so I think, again, thank you. Thank you.
So that would suggest there's no rush.
Yeah.
So I would ask the applicant if there's any harm done to waiting for our zoning regulation rewrite. I mean, I don't think anybody has an objection to rabbits, but...
Just a number.
But there's no pending commercial interest, you know, that he has to have it, and I don't see the rush.
So that's the question for the applicant.
Well, if I may speak, the issue is that we can't proceed with any possible plans if we do want to go down that route. And if we, if we ultimately decide that we do have a commercial interest here, we would be forced to do it outside of Stonington, and that would be unfortunate.
I'm, I just think it's too many ifs, you know, downrange for the, if it was something that he already had a plan and a business, and that was going to be on a piece of property in town, that I would say, yes, we need to make a decision. But I think this should go to the rewrite process to be handled comprehensively.
How long will that process take?
Another year and a half or so.
Yeah, so the decision on this is going to be made within the next five months and by June. So that would be, that would create a problem for us in terms of commercial viability. I guess I, what I, what I, I don't understand, I haven't understood... I guess I, I, what I, what I, I don't understand, I haven't understand, understood it since I, I read the prohibition is, is why.
I don't think there is a good reason. And I don't think anyone here disputes that. It seems rather arbitrary. I think the question is just how to amend the regulations more efficiently so that we aren't, aren't creating another problem that we will then have to untie in a few months.
Pandora's box. It's exactly what it is.
Because, yeah, everything we have to change in the regulations has to go through public hearing. And if we change something now and then want to change it later, it just invites difficulty in that task.
Because on the rewrite, we are talking about farm in quotes. What's, what constitutes a farm? What size should the farm be? Where are farms allowed? So this would fall into that category pretty instantaneously.
Right.
So, maybe I, I'm not so sure I heard that, but if, if we're talking about the restrictions on where this, let's say, commercial rabbit activity can happen, I believe in section 31, there is a keeping of and breeding of livestock regulation which requires setbacks. And, and those include livestock just broadly.
That's exactly right. We're trying to determine whether or not we should include rabbits in the livestock category. Isn't that what we're all saying?
Yeah, I would agree.
Meaning if we pull on this one thread, then we're going to have to start pulling all the threads. We'd rather treat it as a whole unit.
Well, but I thought we said if we, if we allowed the exception here, then it would fall under...
That's one way to...
Livestock. Fall under the farming regulations as a, as a default, if you will.
Yeah, and that would be in a temporary...
And, and that seemed to me would be ideal because then you...
Then we do treat it...
Get around to addressing farms, we can make sure that livestock includes rabbits.
Yeah, we could decide what's owned at that time.
Yeah.
But again...
But in the meantime, right? If we let that...
In the meantime...
He can do, if we did that.
But we...
He can operate what he chooses.
Okay. So allow the exception on a farm.
But again...
I mean, applicant has, applicant has 20 acres, right?
You don't know that. He hasn't specified anything.
It does, yeah.
I thought, I thought the property that was involved here was 20 acres.
He did not say that.
I don't think he said it.
He didn't, he didn't say, we asked very specifically.
I don't think there was any mention of property.
Yeah. He didn't, he didn't say that. So my point is this. We don't want to change this regulation or any regulation without a thorough review. We are, have a committed timeline. We have a holistic view of how we're going about changing our regulations. And it's, it's structured and, you know, I, I think that, sure, you could allow this. Somebody could go forward and you always have to look at changing regulations as an extreme because that's it. People, that's it. You change regulations, it's an extreme. They can go as extreme as they want within that regulation. That's how, how it works. You could have 10 people who want to have rabbits, right? And then all of a sudden, in 12 months, we get down to our agriculture rewrite of farm and we make some major changes. I don't know what that would be, right? We, we're not there yet. But you have then all these people that invested, yes, in a very short period of time. And now we have to, as you said, kind of unravel what's there. So to me, it's not the time to do a rewrite of a regulation. We have a plan. A public plan. It's, you know, publicized. This is our timeline. You know, it's in the, it's in the works. We hired a consultant. We've invested time and money.
Thank you. Keith, do you have any more input?
No, I mean, just that when it comes to the real details of, you know, how many rabbits someone can have and things like that, we, zoning really never gets into that, at least in our regulations. So if someone wanted to have a dairy farm tomorrow, you know, they could have 1,000 cows or 10 cows and we don't really get into that level of detail with zoning, which would be the same for rabbits. But I guess it's more of a question of, you know, do you want to change something now versus wait for the comprehensive zoning rewrite?
Last thing, we should have a motion to close the hearing unless we have further discussion.
No. So Mark, after they close the hearing, you won't be able to comment anymore. Just wanted to see if you had any, any last, last comments here?
Yeah, I mean, the only thing I would say is that, you know, I, I, I appreciate that there's a whole planning rewrite, but regulations can change at any point. And, you know, stalling some, a commercial activity that benefits the town and surrounding areas, to me, doesn't sound like it's in the best interest of Stonington. And I would hate to have to pull operations out of Stonington into a bordering town simply because of something like this. To me, the prohibition seems nonsensical. And I'll leave it at that.
Any other questions for Mark? Or comments?
No.
Are you motion to close this?
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
Thank you, Ryan. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. I see both points. I think Fred does have a valid point of including it with livestock for now yet. Somehow I don't think we're going to get a dozen applications for rabbit breeding. But one never knows. Maybe French cooking will take off.
The only thing I'm, the only thing that I can bring up, just because I'm kind of thinking of the extremes, and I'm also kind of on the fence, I'll be honest about this. I mean, it seems like a very simple thing. He has, you know, especially since there's no clearly defined reason as to why rabbits are there. But then I look at rodents and I think, okay, rodents, that's a big category of critters.
Yeah.
And if there's no defined reason there, then could we be, if somebody, we do this and somebody comes back, well, you remove rabbits and you got to remove rodents.
You start pulling threads.
That's where I'm concerned, that we could open ourselves up to the law of unintended consequences. So I, I just want to bring that up because I'm still trying to figure out which way I want to go on that.
Right.
Or we wanted to change a totally different regulation.
I think we'll be back to this one sooner or later with pigs anyway.
That's why I think, you know, a detailed, thoughtful, guided discussion brings up all these issues as well as other related sections of the regulation that may come into play.
They need revision.
I, I, like, and I don't disagree with what you said Fred, I, at all, at all. So I, I'm on the fence myself on this thing. But I, I think a guided discussion is the best way to work through this.
So that we can move ahead, I will make a motion to approve the application.
Thank you Fred.
Seconded.
Ryan?
Okay.
Seconded for approving. And that would be for just what Keith has here, zoning regulation amendment to approve, remove the word rabbits from ZR 2.1.2, prohibited uses in order from keeping, breeding, and raising of rabbits within the town. All those in favor? All those...
I'm in favor.
Okay, all those opposed?
Aye.
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 Okay, guys, be that way.
And...
Okay, but at least we've, we've got a decision here.
And you want...
Should be, should be reasons stated for this also, and also a decision on the conformance with the P O C D and comprehensive plan.
I'll have to review my P O C D homework.
Well, I think the reason is that we're in the middle of regulation rewrites as we speak and this is on the agenda. You know, farm, farming agriculture is on the agenda for those rewrites and so we have decided to stick with our timeline.
Okay.
Are you, are you comfortable applying to any proposed amendment change between now and the public hearing?
Personally, I am unless it was a health and safety issue.
Could we say that, that the applicant didn't satisfactorily demonstrate that, that the proposal was in conformance with the comprehensive plan? Because that, that really is, is what we're saying. I mean, there wasn't sufficient information upon which to base a decision. There's too many unanswered questions.
Well, chapter 10, 10.2, guide business development task 10.2.5, conduct a comprehensive rewrite of zoning regulations to revisit, update, and moderate commercial zoning and streamline the planning process.
So again, that kind of goes back to the, you know, picking the one thread and certain... We need to be comprehensive about it, I think.
And to deny it, you don't have to come to the conclusion that it doesn't meet the P O C D.
Right.
Something could conform to the P O C D, but you deny it for other reasons.
Right. So do you need two votes here then Keith? One for the P O C D, one for the...
Oh, I think to be on the safe side.
So do we make a motion to approve it as submitted under the P O C D? Is that...
Well, just that it, it, the change would conform to the P O C D.
A little confused, but...
Me too. Can you clarify that Keith?
Well, you know, a decision is supposed to reference the, whether it conforms to the plan of conservation and development.
Could we, as part of what, when we voted on that also state that...
It could be wrapped up in the same motion, yeah.
Okay. So as part of the previously submitted motion that Fred had and that we'd already voted on, then those who denied it, we would be saying that it did not, you know, our denial also means that we did not feel it met the P O C D definitions and requirements as stated. Is that fair?
Sure, yeah.
Okay. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
So this is amendment to the vote?
Yeah, amendment, justification.
Amendment by Ryan. Do I hear second on the amendment?
Second.
Thank you Chuck. Any discussion on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Nope, I voted aye.
Okay.
All right, so ultimately the vote was one to four?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so the zoning regulation amendment did not pass. Now we're just on to the next public hearing.
Right. Do you have the call for that one or not? South Broad Realty?
I can just, I can just read it off. So the next application to be considered is PZ 2232 SUP, South Broad Realty LLC, special use permit application for full liquor permit for onsite consumption in existing restaurant. Change of owner for restaurant business. Property located at 76 South Broad Street, Parktown, assessors map 14, block 2, lot 11, zone LS5.
Thank you Lynn. Seated for this public hearing will be Ryan Deasy, Chuck Sheehan, myself, Ben Philbrick, Fred Dykman, Lynn Conway with the alternative, alternate march. You'll be seated for this one if you need to. And we have Andy Meek and Gary Belkey sitting in attendance. The ground rules, there should be a sign up sheet by the front door, entry door. Anybody like to have a public comment? First we'll hear from the applicant, then we'll have public input, rebuttal by the applicant if necessary, staff input with board questions, and then we'll close and hopefully get to a vote. So the applicant can come up at any time, please.
Hi, how are you this evening? I'm just going to hand out a couple things. This is just a comment in front of my phone.
Okay.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It is currently an existing restaurant. It's a Thai food place. We are looking to convert it to a breakfast and lunch restaurant. Approximately time we would like to open would be April. The current leases, they are there until February. I'm ultimately asking for a full liquor permit because the main focus I would like to do would be to host like bridal showers, baby showers, do Mother's Day brunches. I feel as though that that would bring some revenue to our business, especially keeping up with today's breakfast industry. Brunch is a huge concept. I feel as though that that would just really like elevate and just be something that people would want to come in and visit our restaurant for. Currently, there's 24 seats in the restaurant. There's 11 parking spaces. And I would just like to say that this is not a bar. There is no bar. There's no TVs. There's no reason for people to sit and really linger or drink excessively. It's really just for somebody to come in and have a breakfast cocktail. I am currently, well, I did currently take a tips course. It's a three-hour online course and it really just walks you through how to tell if somebody is intoxicated, what to do, kind of like the de-escalation process on how to approach them. It kind of walks you through how to tell if somebody comes in with a fake ID. So I myself have already taken that and have been certified. And then I would also ask that my staff be, also do that course. But that's, that's pretty much it for any questions.
Can I ask, Ryan, just what will your hours of operation be?
Yep, so the hours would be from 6:30 in the morning until 2:30.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Did you start at 6:30 or did you...
Um, so I, you know, that's a great question. I'm still kind of in the beginning stages. I don't think anybody during the week would want to come in and start their day off with, with a cocktail. I mean, maybe somebody would, but I, that would definitely be something if the board has recommendations to that. We can definitely put like a time on that, like maybe like on the weekends, like liquor sales would start at like, I'm making this up, 8 o'clock in the morning and not 6:30 in the morning.
Is that something we have the power to specify stipulations?
I don't know if we do, do we?
Yeah, I don't know if we do, you know, because the state does regulate liquor control. So I don't know if we can set specific hours about liquor service.
But again, sorry, ultimately it is for just like events, like for future. If I, if, you know, if I would like to do that, that's mainly like what it would be for. We wouldn't like stock a lot of liquor on the, on the premises at once. It would just be strictly what we would need for our cocktails on our menu during the week. But I would like to have that option to bring in more if somebody would like a different variety of drinks with, like, for an event.
You're not, but you have no plans to use the space as an event space?
So, so I do have some plans, but it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a very big event. It would be just small, very intimate, like, like a bridal shower or a baby shower or, you know, or a Mother's Day brunch.
Within the hours you specified or outside of that?
Excuse me, yes. So we would, so for events, it would probably be after hours. It would probably, I was thinking from 2:30 to 5, 6 o'clock at night if that's what they, that's what like is desired.
Any other questions for now from the board?
No.
Okay. Okay, I'd like to see if the public has any. Comments in favor, opposed, or general?
We did have a letter, didn't we? We did have a letter.
Was there a letter in the correspondence here?
No comments from the public? There's one submitted, I think, right, Keith?
Yes, that's right.
Not in favor. And so you're not, your parking would remain the same as...
Correct, yep.
I don't think I have any other questions. Keith, do you have?
No. You know, no, no added seats or live entertainment or some of the other things that sometimes go into restaurants?
Well, you do say, I don't plan to have any live entertainment. Can we change that? There will not be live entertainment?
Yes, we can change that. Yep, there, the, the space is very small. It's only 24 seats, so there's no place for that. So we can, we can change that for sure.
Okay.
Should we, should we also consider an outside limit on the, I mean, right now we're talking 6:30 to 2:00 plus sometimes.
Special events.
Wait until 6:00. Should we specify an absolute outside limit on the closing time?
I think that's a good idea.
Maybe. I mean, the restaurant now, I think, is open for dinner and is open at typical restaurant times.
Can you be all right with that?
If, yeah, if the, if the board feels as though that that's something that needs to be done, I'm, I'm fine with that. As, I mean, as long as it's, you know, reasonable, if you would put yourself in, you know, in your shoes, you know, their shoes, how long you would want to spend, you know, like what you're paying for, what's like, you know, the hours you'd be paying for, that's all.
Like 10:00 PM, 9:00 PM?
Yeah, I mean, if you had a bridal shower or something, would it be over by 10?
Yeah.
I mean, is that what you're thinking, Fred?
Something on that order. I just thought we should have a, an outside limit on it.
That sounds good, by me. Any other? Lynn, are you all right with a 10 o'clock?
Yeah.
Cut-off time?
Five.
You're all right with that?
Yep.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Do we hear a motion to close the hearing?
Make a motion to close. Second.
Okay, I heard Ryan.
Whatever.
Ryan, make a motion.
Let Ryan chuck him.
Chuck the second. All those in favor of closing the hearing?
Aye.
All right. What's the flavor of the decision-making process?
So can you just ask a question that the alcohol permit goes with the business, correct? Not the property, correct?
I think so.
The liquor, the state liquor permit goes with the business.
Yep.
But the special use permit we give them goes with the land.
Goes with the land. So the restaurant that's currently there does not have a liquor license?
No, no.
More of a takeout.
Yeah.
I've been there once, and I didn't see any, I waited about 40 minutes, and I was aching to have a beer while waiting for my takeout. So now they don't.
I didn't even know it was there until I saw it on my way here tonight.
Okay.
So that's a change, that's a significant change then to allow liquor at that site.
At that premise, yeah.
Assuming the state approves.
Right. So there are two votes and waivers, and then a special use permit to be handled.
It appears that, that this is like table service. I probably should have asked this question without any bar or anything like that based on the menu that's been presented, so.
She said there wouldn't be, there was not a bar.
Not a bar, right. So, you know, for this type of venue, it's probably an essential element of the makeup of the restaurant to be able to offer that.
So I disagree. You know, I just was pointing out that it is a, it is a significant change there.
It is. It is. No question.
Yeah. So I agree with you, Chuck. That's why I asked the question, whether it went with the property or the business, because it's kind of a standalone building, but, you know.
Next to the post office and the carpentry shop.
That's, that is a good point, because if, let's say, this restaurant decides to move to another location, the liquor permit would still be there, correct? If it goes with the land. Our ruling goes with the land, and then...
If they want to be a bar.
It could be a, a different venue entirely. So, so you're right, it is a big change, and you have to consider the impact, you know, the, the total impact of that change. But perhaps in light of, in light of this use, it's, it's insignificant. But in light of, of, you know, a different venue, a sit-down restaurant that offers a dinner menu, it may have a different significance.
Sure. Could we, could we make, I don't know, I've never, this is a real question. I don't know, I've never seen it done. Could we make this permit contingent on, for this business only? Is there any way to, is there any way to, to limit it and, and not have the prospect of a bar there on Route 1 someday because, because they have a special use permit for liquor?
I don't, I don't think there's a way to limit it just to this business. You know, they'd have to come back to you...
Like motor vehicle, you know, when someone comes in for a motor vehicle site location permit, it applies to any follow-on use of that site for the same purpose.
But if, if, let's just say, the business moves elsewhere and somebody wants to open a bar on that front, would they still have to come before us? And would we have the ability to put any kind of limitations or other considerations?
I don't think if we approve it now, we could. I think we're approving this site for liquor. And I think they'd have a liquor license.
But if they're going to make a bar, like, that would be a change to it.
Would the hours, though, stay with the...
I think it's transferable.
Well, no, I mean, if we put stipulations on the hours, which we were thinking of doing...
I don't think we can.
Then the new, say, a new owner who wants to open up a bar till 4:00 in the morning, that's being considered.
Right. And, you know, it's often that adding seats comes back before you. You know, if a bar wanted to build an actual bar and, you know, reach out the bar stools, the seats, if they do that, they'd have to come back for another special use permit.
That would probably modify the parking requirements also. So that would be a change of conditions.
It's a tight lot. It's a tight...
Very tight.
And that would the new owner have to go in front of the state liquor board again?
They would, yeah.
Okay, so we have some protection there.
And what if you just bring your own? Bring your own liquor. They, do they need a liquor license for the premises?
No, I don't think there's anything special you need from the state for that. Maybe I'm wrong, and I don't, I don't know if that's how the previous restaurant operated here.
There are a lot of establishments in downtown Putnam, associated with the antique district there, that are small boutique restaurants. One in particular that comes to mind is in the railroad station there, that have liquor permits. They all do. And they have almost no parking, very small postage stamp-type facilities. And the zone is a tremendous success. So, you know, it, it, it does work in other locations. And that zone, I think, is perhaps what I know to be most comparable to what I'm looking at in this application.
But that's in a downtown setting, not on Route 1?
No, true, true. But it's, they're all small establishments, you know, and boutiques like, like this restaurant is. And very similar type requests where it's a limited alcohol menu. It's not the featured item on the menu. And, and it works. So I'm not, I'm not opposed to it.
So Keith, if we were going to proceed, do we need first to vote on the waivers that were requested?
Yeah. Let's start with that.
I'll make a motion to approve the requested waivers as submitted in the application.
Second.
Thank you, Ryan. Thank you, Chuck. Discussion on the waivers? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Special use permit?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the special use permit as submitted and include the draft resolution language that is on the, Keith submitted on the report.
Including hours and no live entertainment?
Including the hours.
Closing at 10:00.
Closing at 10:00 PM.
And no live entertainment?
And no live entertainment as stipulations.
Second.
Thank you, Ryan. Thank you, Chuck. Discussion?
So let me just clarify here, but when you say closing at 10:00 PM, you know, she was talking about it being more events than a normal hour.
For special events.
Yeah.
So does that mean we specify the restaurant hours closing at 2:00 and then special events, if any, finished by 10:00? Would that, would that make sense?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, Fred.
And you intend these as like three separate stipulations? Or just, okay.
In addition to your draft stipulation.
Yeah.
You have those, Keith?
Yes, so number one was just, it's not the exact wording here, but the regular...
Hours of...
Hours of operation are 6:30 AM.
2:30.
2:30 PM. Number two is that closing at 10:00 PM for special events. Number three, no live entertainment. Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So Carrie. Thank you. Do you want to stay here all night, or should we close this?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Thank you, Fred. All those in favor?
Aye.